Good afternoon and welcome to the November 17th meeting of the Gaston County Board of Education. My name is Josh Chris, but I'm proud to represent the Dallas Township and serve as the Board Chair. I would like to welcome everyone to our meeting and thank you for being here. At this time, I'd like our other Board members to introduce themselves. We'll start with Mr. Dedman.
Lee Dedman, Gastonia Township.
Robbie Lovelace, Cherryville Township.
Todd Kinlaw, South Point Township.
Jana Smith, Gastonia Township.
Dot Cherry, at-large member.
AM Stevens, The Riverbend Township.
Jeff Ramsey, at-large member.
And Mr. Moore is not with us, so now he's excused. Our next order of business is to offer invocation, and we'd like to ask Dwayne Burks, chaplain at the Gateway Gaston, to offer our invocation.
I invite you to join me for a moment of silence, and then those who would like to continue with me in prayer. Gracious God, thank you for the opportunity to serve children in this community, and in serving children to serve teachers, and staff, and families all across this county. We pray that we would do that decently and in order, and with the children always at the center of what happens. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And now I'd like to ask Dr. Hushard to lead us in our pledge and our character traits.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Tonight, we have a special honor and treat. The East Gaston JROTC students will perform the Color Guard. The detail include Alyssa Curtis, who is the Color Guard Commander, Catherine Escobar, Victoria Reep, and James Soto. They are joined by Colonel Robert Kudelko and Master Sergeant Samuel Taylor, who are the JROTC instructors from East Gaston. Thank you all for being here. At this time, I'd like to call forward Olivia Miller and Brody Self, who are both sixth graders at John Chavis Middle School, who will lead us in our pledge.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, East Gaston JROTC, and Olivia and Brody. And now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call up some fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade students from W. Blaine Beam Intermediate to talk to us about our character trait for the month, which is kindness. I'd like to call up Rosalyn Shuford, Jacob Ward, come on up when I call your name, Finn Semerchin, Haley Schultz, and Tanisha Cobb. And again, fourth and fifth graders from W. Blaine Beam Intermediate to share with us our character trait for the month, which is kindness.
Hi, my name is Rosalyn Shuford, and I am a fifth grader at WB Beam Intermediate School in Cherryville, North Carolina. Each month, elementary school's highlight of character trait, and this month, we officially change on kindness. I think kindness is when you get a little something, and don't expect anything out of it. A hundred of the first graders of the year have been given, after times, when someone is waiting to be treated, kind of like a loving.
My name is Stan Emerson, and I am a fourth grader at WB Beam. Some examples of how you can do something at WB Beam are to give a compliment to a classmate, give a hug to yourself.
I'm Haley Schultz, a fourth grader, and I think you can make a caring card for your teacher, say hi to someone new, or write a positive note to a classmate, or show kindness.
Hi, I'm Tanisha Cobb, a fifth grader at WB Beam, and one of my favorite quotes about kindness comes from the book Wonder. When given the choice between being right or being kind, choose kind.
That is wonderful. Thank you all. Ayes. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
So next on our agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Stevens, second, Ms. Smith, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor? That's unanimous. Our next item is good news happening in our district, so I'll ask Mr. Higgins to take the podium and lead us in our good news.
Chairman Chris, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the Board, and Superintendent Hushard, I am pleased to present our good news recognition for the month of November, and we have a full slate of good news to share with you this evening. First, we would like to invite the Stewart W. Kramer High School Girls Golf Team to come forward. This is the Stewart W. Kramer High School Girls Golf Team, and the team members are Audrey Leeser, Mackenzie Blackledge, Winsley Croats, and their coach Brad Sloan is with them. In a weather-shortened 18-hole tournament held at the Longleaf Golf and Family Club in Southern Pines, Stewart W. Kramer earned an outstanding runner-up finish in the 4A State Championship. Individually, sophomore Winsley Croats shot a 77 to finish third in the state championship, and Mackenzie Blackledge scored an 87, 86, to place 11th, and Audrey Leeser shot a 93, finishing 16th overall, and earning the Class 4A Sportsmanship Award. At the West Regionals Tournament, Winsley captured first place with an impressive score of 70, and even more notably, she achieved a hole-in-one during the competition. The team finished second overall in the Regionals, which qualified the team for the state tournament. We would like to say congratulations to the Stewart W. Kramer High School Girls Golf Team and Coach Sloan on an exceptional season, and we look forward to seeing more outstanding accomplishments in the years to come.
Congratulations, ladies. That's awesome, catching up with the men's team, I see. They've been up here before. Glad to see it. Glad to welcome you guys here. On behalf of the Gaston County School Board, I'm Todd Kinlaw of the South Point Township. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to go and runner-up. That's great. That means we got to go. Who's coming back next year? Those two. Alright, well, I hope to see you back up here next year. Alrighty, but no, who had the hole-in-one? Man, that is awesome. I've been playing a long, I'm an old guy. I've been playing a long time. I've never even come close to a hole-in-one. That is so awesome. I'm so proud of you. But again, we're proud of you as a school board. We're proud of you as a community, and we wish you all the best. So on behalf of the school board, I want to present you guys with this plaque. There you go, Coach. I'll let you hold it. And say thank you for all your efforts, and look forward to seeing you back next year. Thank you.
And if we have parents, parents and representatives from Stewart W. Kramer.
Come on, parents.
Family affair.
Lane. I just got a real quick question. Since Winsley's brother's here, I'm trying to figure out who's the better golfer. Good job, ladies.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we would like to invite the South Point High School Girls Golf Team to come forward. And Sean, you may have to, here they come. This is the Girls Golf Team from South Point High School. Joining us are students Madison Purdon, Sophia Travinsky, Chloe Villarreal, Sammy Clements, Caroline Mumford, and Coach Allison Lord. We are proud to celebrate this team this evening on making sports history by winning back-to-back state championships in golf. Recently, South Point won the Class 5A State Championship in a weather-shortened tournament at Stonebridge Golf Club in Monroe to capture back-to-back titles. The team ended the tournament with a combined score of 379, eight strokes ahead of the second-place team. Individually, senior Madison Purdon finished as the 5A runner-up with a 118 score over 27 holes. She led South Point. Additionally, Sophia Travinsky was honored with the Class 5A Sportsmanship Award. In addition to the state championship, the students also won the Big South Conference Championship for the fourth consecutive year, and were runners-up in the West Regionals, which qualified the team for the state championship. And I understand this team, they were the regional second place, and the team that won the Regionals ended up being the second place in the state, and our team came out as the state champion. So please join us in congratulating our back-to-back state champions in golf from South Point High School.
Congratulations, ladies. Back-to-back. That is a tough feat. To win one time is quite an accomplishment, but to do it twice is pretty awesome. So proud of you guys. I know some of you guys might have been up here last year. I had the pleasure to hand you guys the plaque, but on behalf of the Gaston County Schools and Gaston County School Board, I want to say thank you for getting out there and working hard, and hopefully we'll be back with a three. Is that impossible or not? I mean, I hope you guys, any, anybody coming back? I know I heard 1 senior. So, maybe 2 of you guys coming, no pressure. No pressure, Coach. Don't you laugh, you're the ones that got a hold of the other.
Oh, of course.
And we know you will. But again, we're so proud of you, we're so thankful that you guys went and represented South Point, South Point High School, and on behalf of the school board, I'll hand you this plaque, and we'll get some pictures taken. Once again, thank you so much.
Todd.
Parents to come forward?
You got any parents here?
Parents and the principal and others from South Point to join us?
Todd. Kenlaw.
Mr. Chair, I was going to let you know, we have the ladies in pink that partners with South Point High School Golf Team. If y'all please, will y'all stand? Lady in pinks, they raised, I think, $30,000 off this golf tournament, and the South Point girls are partnering with them last 2 or 3 years. So, thank you for your support.
forward at this time. Elizabeth is a student-teacher at North Belmont Elementary School. She is a senior elementary education major at Belmont Abbey College and a member of the track and field team at Belmont Abbey. Tonight, we are celebrating Ms. Woodruff, who was recently named the North Carolina Student Science Teacher of the Year. She also earned the Elementary Student Teacher Award from the North Carolina Science Teachers Association in recognition of her outstanding performance, creativity, and passion for teaching science through hands-on learning. Tonight, we congratulate Ms. Woodruff on this prestigious honor, and we commend her for inspiring students and for making a difference as a student-teacher leader. Without question, she is going to be an amazing classroom teacher, and I am sure that Human Resources has a contract ready for her to sign up to become a classroom teacher in Gaston County Schools. Congratulations.
Todd, you beat me to the punch on the contract, but you signed it, he has another question. Elizabeth, congratulations. We are so thankful that you put your energy and efforts here at Gaston County Schools. We appreciate you. I'm also very proud of you, because I'm also an Abbey grad as well, so I finally win. And thanks for representing both the BAC and Gaston County Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm staying at North Belmont.
Awesome.
Good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you doing it.
This evening, we would like to take some time to recognize a group of individuals who are often the unsung heroes in our schools, and I'm talking about the school cafeteria staff. Every day, these employees arrive early to prepare healthy meals, greet students with a smile, and help ensure that every child is nourished and ready to learn. Their work may happen behind the scenes, but their impact is felt across the entire school community. Tonight, we're recognizing 5 cafeteria staffs for consistently achieving a 100% rating. Since the 2018-19 school year, these 5 schools have earned a perfect score. Year after year, inspection after inspection, these school cafeteria employees have demonstrated excellence, consistency, and pride in what they do. At this time, we would like to invite the following schools to come forward, and we'll begin with Belmont Central Elementary.
Y'all have to go to the side after you do your thing, so we can get a group picture, okay? If I can get one shot with this, they mad at me because of how tough it is. Who wants to be the holder of the plaque?
The manager.
The manager. So, we're going to get a picture, and then, and then we'll praise, okay?
And now, we would like to recognize Katava Heights Elementary. And now with us, we have the cafeteria staff from Hunter Hus High School. And we also have the cafeteria staff from Rankin Elementary School. And Ms. Cherry, it is important to point out that all of our school cafeterias maintain an A grade. These are the cafeterias that have had a 100 perfect score since the 18-19 school year.
I wonder how many of us would get 100 for our houses. There's the first one. But these women are so important to our daily activity. We couldn't do what we do without, well, and they're meant to, they're just not here. But we couldn't do what we do without them feeding, feeding everybody breakfast, lunch, and then finishing up their task, and then starting over consistently every single school day. How many children do we feed? A lot. And to get 100 consistently, year in and year out, is really unheard of. But they do it with pride, they do it with smiles on their faces, because I see them, and I know the board sees it, everybody sees them, and the joy in their hearts. They don't do it for thanks, they do it for the love of our children and their jobs. So, they are truly some of our unsung heroes and heroines. Thank you. Thank you.
I think we have a lot of their principals too, but let's get a picture with me and just them first. And then we'll get the principals, he'll move us on. Now, if we can get the principals, because I know some of them are here.
The principals for the schools, have our principals come in and join us.
Anybody else? Yeah, then, they have to look in. Massey, Massey. Sorry, Massey right here. Massey is the glue to all these people, right? Right there. Massey, why are you over there? Right there, right? No, that's not that.
And I think she's in the lobby.
Yeah, she's back there.
Here she comes. Okay, we're going to ask Ms. Jennings to come forward, and we do have some seats that have opened up here in the room, if those waiting out in the lobby want to come in. Okay, alright. This is Bethany Jennings from Stewart W. Kramer High School, and we are proud to announce and celebrate this evening that Ms. Jennings, she has been named the 2025 North Carolina High School Choral Teacher of the Year. This award is presented by the North Carolina Music Educators Association, and Ms. Jennings was honored at the state Honors Chorus Concert recently in Winston-Salem. Ms. Jennings has been teaching for 20 years, including the past 12, as the Choral Director at Stewart W. Kramer. In addition to her work in education, she serves as the Director of Music Ministries at First Presbyterian Church in Gastonia, and is the founder and host of both the North Carolina Collegiate Choral Symposium and the Carolinas Conductor Summer Workshop. During the awards presentation in Winston-Salem, the following was said about Ms. Jennings. "Our 2025 Teacher of the Year exemplifies an unwavering commitment to excellence in teaching, not only in the classroom, but also at the state level and beyond. Within the walls of her classroom, she strives to create an environment where students thrive both musically and personally, as they pursue the highest standards of artistic performance while experiencing the power of choral music. Beyond the classroom, she leads by example, working tirelessly to strengthen and advance the choral profession. Through her leadership, colleagues have grown through meaningful collaboration, communities have been enriched through her shared expertise, and a standard has been upheld, one that reminds us all of what exceptional teaching can achieve." Tonight, we are honoring Bethany Jennings, our North Carolina High School Choral Teacher of the Year. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we want to say thank you for all your work for us, and for being the State Teacher of the Year. That's awesome. And we all know, we're well-known in the region for fine arts, but also in the state. A lot of our chorus groups get invited to these type of events. If you hadn't noticed, the band this past month or so has been doing all their competitions. They're always 1st or 2nd, and that takes because we have great teachers leading them, and Lord bless them. Also, I want to recognize Dr. Hushard and his leadership, and Todd's group to really enhance the chorus group. We all know through COVID, they lost a lot of participation, and we're trying to get that back. And so, we want to thank you again for all your work.
Congratulations.
Do you, Ms. Stevens, you want them to take a picture with us? How many you got up here? Yeah. Okay, okay, guys coming up? Oh, you're losing your voice. Ms. Johnson?
So, we have recognized our High School Choral Teacher of the Year. We are going to recognize now a very talented group of students who were selected to perform as part of the North Carolina Middle School and High School Honors Chorus Festival earlier this month in Winston-Salem. This event is organized each year by the North Carolina Music Educators Association. Students from across the state audition for the opportunity to perform under the direction of nationally-recognized conductors. Being selected is a significant honor that represents outstanding vocal ability dedication and musical achievement. First, we have with us some of our middle school students who were selected for the state honors chorus, and when I call your name in your school, if you'll come forward. We have from Mount Holly Middle School, Carmelo Raymond. From Kramer to Middle School, the honorees are Worth Helms, Raven Miller, and Piper Whitworth. Those students may be with us. And then our honors chorus students from Belmont Middle School, and some of these were were not able to attend, but I'm gonna read the names anyway, and Mr. Ramsey will just do our best handing out those certificates. Okay, so we have Bentley McGugan, Charles Marx, Easton Messick, Harper Collier, Isaac Banson, John Sutcliffe, Liam Bain, Lily Filler, Lucas Wallace, and William Gathings. Those are students from Belmont Middle School. There we go. Okay, and we have three high school students who were chosen for the State Honors Chorus, and two of the students are not with us, but I do want to mention Matthew Heilig and Olivia Jenkins from Forestview High School. And then from Stuart W. Kramer High School, we have Zachary Hatfield, and Zachary is with us.
On behalf of the Gast County Board of Education, we want to thank y'all. As you notice, we just crowned the State Teacher of the Year, and I know y'all have good chorus teachers too, so we want to thank y'all for this space.
We'll get a picture with Mr. Ramsey with this group, and then we'll ask any of the principals or chorus teachers that are with us to join us for the photo. The chorus teachers and parents that may be with us, we'll do a group picture. Principals. And Mr. Chairman, that completes our Good News recognition for the month of November.
Thank you, Todd, and I believe you've got one more after this, correct?
We have one additional item.
Okay, what was yours?
And this is the American Education Week Proclamation for the Board of Education, and it is a pleasure to present the proclamation for American Education Week, which is November the 17th through the 21st this week. And each year, schools and communities across the nation observe American Education Week to celebrate our public schools and recognize the individuals who dedicate their lives to the education profession. And now, at this time, I would like to read the proclamation. "Whereas, American Education Week is a time for the community to celebrate public education and honor the professionals who work to ensure that all students receive a quality education, something that cannot be taken away from them and provides hope, possibilities, and opportunities for a meaningful and successful life. And whereas, the first American Education Week was observed in 1921, and since then, schools and communities across the United States have championed the belief that public education is a pillar of our democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity. And whereas, the theme for American Education Week focuses on the importance of togetherness and collaboration among students, teachers, families, and other members of the school family, in support of a teaching and learning environment where everyone can discover, grow, and thrive regardless of their background or circumstances. And whereas, we are proud of our public schools in Gaston County, which serve as an integral part of our community and cultivate our future leaders through opportunities for students in academics, athletics, the fine arts, career and technical education, extracurricular activities, and other areas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Education is proud to proclaim November the 17th through the 21st, 2025, as American Education Week in Gaston County Schools, and encourages everyone to show their support by gauging in special activities that bring attention to the importance of our schools, and also expressing their appreciation for the outstanding education that our public schools provide to children. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes the Board of Education adopted this, the 17th day of November, 2025. And Mr. Chairman, this is our American Education Week proclamation. It is presented to the Board of Education for consideration and approval, and following the approval, I will introduce the guests that we have with us to accept the proclamation."
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Stevens on the motion to accept the proclamation, Mr. DeBman on the second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
And Mr. Chairman, and Dr. Hushard, if you'll come down for this presentation, and accepting the American Education Week proclamation are several of our Evening of Excellence Award winners for 2025-2026, and I'd like for them to come forward at this time. We have with us John Ramos of Forestview High School, he is the Gaston County Teacher of the Year. Richard Morris, also of Forestview High School, is the Gaston County Schools' New Teacher of the Year. Kristi Jolly of WP Greer Middle School, the Gaston County Schools' Teacher Assistant of the Year. Charlotte Friday of WA Best Elementary School, she is the Gaston County Schools' Assistant Principal of the Year. And Dr. Lee Smith of our Human Resources Department is the Central Office Administrator of the Year. And since we have Mr. Ramos with us this evening, we would like to congratulate him on being one of the six finalists out of 4,000 nominations. He was a finalist. Mr. Ramos was a finalist for the Carolina Panthers Teacher of the Year Award. So congratulations, and we've got the plaque for the presentation.
On behalf of the Board, thank you all. You know, it's obviously a pleasure, and as you can see tonight, with everything that we've got going on, it truly takes everybody in our system to make it work. From the folks serving food, to the administrators, to the teachers, to everybody, and to the parents, so thank you all for what you do, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
You've been a lifelong educator, I know what it is to be an educator, to be a teacher, and to work with professionals such as you and the 3,500 other employees we have. So thank you for your dedication, thank you for choosing to be in education, and thank you for being here in Gaston County. Thank you.
So again, thank you all, and it's amazing the things that we have going on in our district, and it is a pleasure to celebrate those, so thank you. Next on our agenda is our Classroom Moment. Tonight, we're focusing on our JROTC programs, and Dr. Shannon Hullett will introduce the Classroom Moment.
So good evening, Chairman Chris, Vice Chair Cherry, Dr. Hushard, and members of the Board. I am happy to be here tonight to spotlight one of the outstanding programs available in many of our high schools, the JROTC program. The Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Program prepares high school students for leadership roles while making them aware of their rights, responsibilities, and privileges as American citizens. It provides instruction and rewarding opportunities that will benefit the student, the community, and more importantly, the nation. The JROTC teaches young men and women the kind of self-discipline, self-confidence, and leadership skills that can help them successfully meet the challenges of adulthood. This program is conducted at secondary schools throughout the nation by instructors who are retired Navy, Army, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard officers, and enlisted personnel. Currently, we're proud to say that the JROTC program is in five of our high schools, representing four branches of the armed services. These include two from the Army at Hunter Husk and North Gaston, the Navy is at South Point, Air Force represented at Ashbrook, and the Marine Corps at East Gaston. Our oldest program is Ashbrook, dating back to 1970, and our newest is at North Gaston that got started in 2011. Collectively, we have close to 500 students who are enrolled in the JROTC program across Gaston County schools. There are four core components to the JROTC program, and we want to share those with you tonight. Leadership and character. Cadets learn communication, teamwork, and decision-making through structured lessons and applied leadership roles. These include a command structure within each school. Academics and citizenship is another core component. Courses include leadership, civics, ethics, and military history, reinforcing responsibility, academic excellence. We also have specialized programs such as drone technology, STEM education, and flight simulators. Physical fitness is another core component of our JROTC program. Cadets get to participate in regular physical fitness training, drill, and ceremony. This often involves marching and learning military formations and teamwork-based challenges. And more importantly, community service. Our cadets complete service projects that strengthen not only the school, but community ties. Some of these include the Night to Shine Prom, Veterans Breakfasts, and Community Cleanups. There's also opportunities and activities available to our JROTC students. There's competition teams, which include drill team, color guard, and marksmanship competitions. Leadership development, there are summer leadership camps and regional competitions. Civic events include color guard, parades, and flag ceremonies, and the uniforms. Cadets get to wear their uniforms weekly at school during community events, and it allows them to show the pride that they have. The impact and the benefits of this program, we could go on and on, and just kind of highlight those impact and benefits, but we want to focus in on three. Academic impact, there are higher attendance and graduation rates among cadets nationally. Many cadets pursue post-secondary education or go into the military. Personal growth is another impact and benefit of this program. The JROTC builds self-confidence, discipline, and leadership. It encourages citizenship and community engagement. And then just the community benefit, hundreds of volunteer service hours are contributed annually by our cadets. The JROTC is not exclusively about joining the military, it's about developing leaders and characters for life. These programs will enable our cadets to better serve their country as leaders, as citizens, and in the military if they choose to enlist. We would now like to share a brief video produced by our Communications Department, and it spotlights the Marine Corps JROTC program at East Gaston High School. I am joined by Colonel Robert Cudelko. He is going to have a few words with you after we watch the video.
Good afternoon, sir.
What is JROTC? It's a way to develop responsible and informed men and women, to make them positive contributors to whatever community they choose to serve. While the structure looks like the military, and the things that you see us do look a lot like what the military does, the real purpose behind it is to build self-confidence, to create teamwork, to enable better communication among, you know, young men and women, so they can solve problems together, so they can be productive members of their society, their community. I think the primary element of what makes junior ROTC important is building leaders. No matter where you are, you know, in the world or in your community, we always depend on leaders. So having the self-confidence, having the communication skills, the teamwork skills, is all about, you know, what helped people become leaders. We do teach, the leadership traits and principles is one of the key elements of that.
We teach them customs and courtesies, first aid, leadership is called a leadership education class, so that's the biggest thing we focus on, is the leadership traits, leadership principles, how to deal with others, how to take charge, how to follow instructions, how to work as a team, put others before yourself, and volunteering is a lot of, a big part of the program, just giving back to your community and community service, just being a good citizen.
It's definitely helped me be more confident and get out of my shell. The program's not to build soldiers, it's to build leaders.
You get to be someone you never thought you could be, and it just gives you more opportunities in school and out of school. I mean, you gain different character traits, you gain, you know, disrespect that, you know, you didn't think you had.
I see that the junior ROTC program provides students another option for what they can do in terms of extracurricular activities. So it's not just a daily class, but we also offer opportunities to be on the drill team, or the air rifle team, or a physical fitness team, or on part of the color guard. So there's a lot of opportunities for kids to help find ways where they can participate.
We have what they call ROTC kids, you know, like you got band kids, you got athletes, you got, you know, the arts kids, and you got some that did, this is where they fit in at.
Coming from someone who didn't know really much about it, building a friendship in it, or like a family, you know, gets you out of your comfort zone, makes you feel comfortable, and, you know, it gives you more opportunities to be something more.
About 10% of our class usually goes to the military each year, and the rest of them just go on to be productive citizens, and that's the goal.
Good evening, Dr., excuse me, Superintendent Hushard, members of the school board, all principals, faculty, and parents. Thank you very much for highlighting the five great JROTC programs you have here at Gaston County Schools. As the video and presentation emphasized, JROTC is about developing leadership skills and helping children become positive contributing members of their communities. Many of these kids will never go on to serve in the armed forces, but most of them will stay in North Carolina. As such, a strong and well-supported JROTC program is an investment in Gaston County's future. JROTC is a truly unique program where students learn by doing. The instructors put students into leadership positions where conflict and teamwork are ever-present. Students have no choice but to put down their cellphones, deal with people face-to-face, work together, learn to communicate, and solve problems in order to accomplish the mission. I hope you noticed that many of our cadets are female. Nearly half of the JROTC enrollment is female, and their participation is vital to the longevity and success of these programs. Our air rifle team, drill team, and color guard offer three unique opportunities in which boys and girls can compete head-to-head, demonstrating their skills and building their self-confidence. I'd like to close by saying thank you to my principal, Dr. Huff Stettler, and to the school district for your level of interest and support that you have shown to your ROTC programs, and a level of trust that you've shown to your instructors. In the same way the district wants to attract the highest-quality teachers, this district also wants the highest-quality JROTC instructors. Events like tonight, and your support throughout the year, integrating your ROTC programs into your schools' activities, all help to create an environment where instructors want to come and teach. Thank you very much for your time and attention this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Colonel. Dr. Hushard?
I just wanted to say, later in my words, at the end of the, I'm gonna highlight our veterans and thank them, but Colonel Cudelko, I want to thank you for what you do for the children of Gaston County and what you've done for our nation. So thank you for your service, your time, your energy and effort you're giving our kids in these gaps.
And I think all of the colonels retired, he's probably not celebrating his 250th as the Marine Corps did last week, so congratulations on that, Colonel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hullett. So next on our agenda is public expression. This is a time for the board to hear comments from the citizens about matters. This is a time for the board to hear comments from the citizens about matters of public concern related to the school system. Our board policy sets aside 30 minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting for citizens to address the board. Before we hear from the public, let me outline the rules. Citizens wishing to make comment who have completed the request to speak form prior to the beginning of the meeting will be recognized by the chair and requested to step to the microphone to make their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Members of the board do not respond to public expression during a comment period. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential or personnel matters. Speakers who wish to give materials to the board will hand them to the clerk, and the chair shall rule on all points of order. We do have a large number tonight, so I would ask that the speakers please be very mindful of the three minutes. First on our list is our esteemed colleague from the past, Ms. Guthrie, who served the board well for many, many years, and she's always a friend to the board. Ms. Guthrie, you are up first.
The African-American Museum is located at 300 South Firestone Street, Suite P, Gastonia, North Carolina. The great erudite Mary McLeod Bethune was said, and I quote, "Invest in the human soul. Who knows? It may be a diamond in the rough." The African-American Museum, founded by Bobby and Dorothy Guthrie, February 16, 2019, wanted to make an investment in our children. Being educators ourselves, we felt like we wanted to continue to support and to encourage the children in Gaston County. We have done that through the programming and other activities that we offer each and every month. We know that November, and I was so happy to hear American Education Week, you know how I am about that. Also, November is National Family Literacy Month. November is also National Picture Book Month. As we provided the strategies or decided on which strategies to use for this month, we asked Captain Adrian Walker of the City of Gastonia Police to read to four of your innovation schools whom we see twice a week on a rotation basis. We can see as many as 180 children each week from Pleasant Ridge, Wood Hill, Lingerfelt, and H.H.B. I did say that November was Picture Book Month, so we used Alma's Art, an artist, so that our children could use their imagination while Captain Walker read via Zoom to the children. We also talked about November being Literacy Month. We had, through Dr. Conyers' leadership, Family Literacy Night, where the parents came and we gave them activity bags that we worked and received from Adam Gob with the county, Gaston County. We promote America 250, only we do African Americas 250. Give me two more seconds. Okay, let's go around the county. I could ask each of you a question. Who's the first African-American woman from Bessemer City to graduate from the University of Chapel Hill? Or who was the first policeman from Dallas, North Carolina to serve? These are the questions and the information that we are providing for your children. We do believe, and it's my old favorite African proverb, that it takes the village to raise a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Next on our list is Letitia White.
Hello, my name is Latasha White.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I am a proud resident of Gaston County, and I've lived here my entire life. I stand here as a lifelong resident of Gastonia and a proud graduate of Gaston County Schools. I am the founder and executive director of Help Carolina, and I am the founder of the Gastonia Ebony Fest Juneteenth Festival. I'm deeply connected to this community, not only because it raised me, but because everything I do is rooted in making sure every child, every family, and every neighborhood has access to opportunity, dignity, and the history that shaped us. I am a proud product of Gaston County Schools. Mr. Dedman was my principal, and my story shows what happens when students are given exposure, opportunity, and resilience. From Head Start to Odyssey of the Mind at Highland Junior High to Commissioner's School at Belmont Abbey, where I met a student from Laos and learned about new cultures, to Air Force ROTC, and my scholarship at North Carolina State University, and later Pfeiffer University, where I attended the United Nations Conference on Economic Impact, and I earned two degrees in business and healthcare administration. Each step was about exposure, courage, and opportunity. But there's one story that many students never hear, and that's Juneteenth. Everyone knows about the Fourth of July. It's celebrated everywhere, even though it also happens during summer break. But Juneteenth is different. Though it is part of our shared history, many people don't know it, and if we don't teach it, it doesn't get told. Literacy is more than reading a book. It is reading yourself. It is understanding where you come from, how your story fits into the world, and why your voice matters. When our students learn Juneteenth, they gain a deeper form of literacy, historical literacy, knowing the truth of our past, cultural literacy, honoring the people and traditions that shaped us, identity literacy, understanding who they are and what they carry, civic literacy, recognizing their power and responsibility in a community. This is the kind of literacy that builds confidence. It strengthens self-worth. It teaches students not to just read history, but to see themselves in it. When children see themselves reflected in the curriculum, they don't shrink, they rise. They participate more, they lead more, and they begin to imagine futures that once felt out of reach. Teaching Juneteenth is not an extra lesson, it is literacy, it is belonging, it is the foundation for a stronger, more unified Gaston County. Juneteenth marks June 19, 1865, when General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced that the enslaved were free, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. It's a living reminder that freedom must be taught, protected, and practiced. America's Second Independence Day. Teaching Juneteenth in our schools closes a gap in American history. It expands literacy beyond reading, teaching, identity, belonging, and civic awareness.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next on this is Melody Hill. Ms. Beck. Ms. Beck, if you would, go ahead and start the time.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Melody Hill. My address is 101 Bryant Street in Belmont. I am a teacher at Hawx Nest Steam Academy. I have come to speak to you about my response to the letter I received regarding absences as a classroom teacher. To whom it may concern, I hope you hear my heart as an advocate for all teachers when you listen to this. To whom it may concern, across North Carolina, teachers are watching the profession they love slowly erode. Years of stagnant pay, rising expectations, and declining respect have left many educators exhausted and discouraged. Most of us stay because we care deeply about our students, but even the most devoted teachers can reach a breaking point. For me, that point came in the form of a letter. After 23 and a half years of teaching, most of them in North Carolina, I've received an official reprimand accusing me of neglecting my students because I had been absent due to COVID and necessary medical appointments. The letter stated that learning cannot happen when a teacher is not present, unquote, and warned that further absences could lower my professional evaluations in NCCs. I wasn't on vacation, I was sick. Even while recovering, I arrived at school every day at 6:30 a.m. to prepare detailed substitute plans, organize materials, and ensure my students continued to learn. I reviewed my subnotes daily and adjusted my lessons accordingly. That's not neglect, that's dedication. No other profession expects employees to work while they are ill, yet teachers often do because we care deeply about our students and take pride in our work. What we need in return is not reprimand, but respect. As a new teacher to Gaston County, having relocated from Cabarrus County Schools, this was not the welcome I had hoped for. More than two decades in the classroom, I do not need to be reminded that my students' education matters. It has always been at the center of what I do. What teachers need is compassion, trust, and understanding from our leaders. The timing of this experience could not be worse. North Carolina's teacher shortage continues to grow. Salaries for veterans educators have remained stagnant, and morale is at an all-time low. Gaston County Supplement Pay is among the lowest in the region, and many classrooms still lack certified teachers. That's where the true instruction is lost, not with professionals who occasionally fall ill, and you can see that note in your letter. I love teaching, I love my students, but this level of disrespect towards educators cannot continue. The reprimand I received may seem small to some, but for me, it symbolized something much larger, the straw that can break a camel's back. Until we treat teachers as the professionals they are, we will continue to lose them. When that happens, it's our students and our communities who will pay the price. I spoke with Sue today. I gave her some of my recommendations of what we could do to work together. Look at the calendar of surrounding counties to see how we can give teachers... Thank you.
Next on our list is Karen Elrod.
Hi, we submitted a new form with my name. I am Sandy Larson.
Okay, if you would hold just a second, please. So Ms. Larson, now you're up. Thank you.
Okay, got it. My name is Sandy Larson. I'm at 3603 Furman Circle in Gastonia, North Carolina. This is Karen Elrod. Tati and the rest of the red shirt folks back there are part of the interest, only a handful of people out of the hundreds that have shown interest for Lifewise Academy, which is why we're here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about the implementation about Lifewise Academy into Gaston County Schools. The folks, we've seen a strong commitment to this opportunity that supports students and families, which is why we addressed this matter with Dr. Hushard in written form. Karen provided that to him. You must be wondering exactly what is Lifewise Academy, so let me go through that briefly. It provides a Bible-based character education during school hours through release-time religious instruction. The U.S. Supreme Court has upheld this model when it's held off-school property, privately funded, and parent-permitted. Lifewise follows each of these requirements. Classes are scheduled during non-core academic times. They take place off-campus and are supported entirely by the community. This is certainly interesting Gaston County community. We've got over 200 names already on our interest list, and that continues to grow. As you know, students today face many pressures, but programs like Lifewise complement the work of our schools by strengthening character, responsibility, and positive decision-making. Districts offering these programs often report benefits and improve focus, behavior, and overall morale of their students. There is genuine excitement in our community about providing this option for families who choose it, and we look forward to speaking with you in greater detail about it. Thank you for your time and your attention and the dedication to our children here in Gaston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Deana Graham, and I apologize if I said your name incorrectly.
Good evening, Superintendent and school board members. My name is Deana Graham, and I serve as the Vice President of the NAACP Gastonia Branch 5394B. Our mission is to advocate for the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all individuals while striving to eliminate racial hatred and discrimination. Education represents a fundamental human right. This evening, I wish to highlight a critical issue, the challenges facing the Gastonia school system and the growing performance disparity between white students and their minority counterparts, specifically our Black and Brown students, as well as the concerning trend in school segregation. Now, I understand some of you may be reluctant to discuss or hear about race and diversity, but we must acknowledge these issues because the data tells the truth. Since 2000, North Carolina has made no advancement in closing the performance gaps between white students and those of minority backgrounds, according to the findings of the National Assessment of Education Process, the NAEP. In Gastonia, 14.1% of students are Black, with 51.4 classified as economically disadvantaged, a significant portion of whom are Black. Economically disadvantaged students are defined as those whose household income is at or below the 185% of federal poverty guidelines. For your 23-24 school year, proficiency rates revealed that 69.1% of Black students were non-proficient in math compared to 41.4% of white students. Among the economically disadvantaged students, that figure stands at 62.3%. In reading assessments, non-proficiency rates showed that 69.8% of Black students fall short compared to the 46.1% for white students and 65.4% for economically disadvantaged learners. In an analysis of the data from the 10 innovation schools indicates a clear pattern of intentional school segregation, where Black students were disproportionately enrolled in higher poverty schools compared to their white peers within the same district. This inequality continues to hinder the access to quality education. The NAACP wants you to consider enhanced targeted support and intervention strategies, a data-driven framework accompanied by continuous progress monitoring...
Ms. Graham, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on our list is Brenda Eskridge.
Brenda Eskridge, Stowe Creek, Mount Holly. I stand before you as a concerned resident and advocate for students and families in the district to share concerns about ongoing school bus shortages and root disruptions. Families report that some students do not have access to bus transportation at all, while others are experiencing significantly delayed pickup and drop-off times. Data suggests that when students are late to school because they lack reliable transportation, the consequences extend far beyond inconvenience. Persistent tardiness and absenteeism due to transportation translate directly into lost instructional time and widening achievement gaps for students who are in many cases already most vulnerable. I do understand that this is a statewide issue, but we owe it to our students and families in Gaston Counties who become the anomaly. I spoke with reliable sources working within the county in leadership positions, one who stated that Bessemer City did not have bus transportation for some time during the school year, another who... transportation for some time during the school year, another who stated that there are teachers driving part-time. Imagine that, with all the responsibilities of lesson planning, classroom management, parent engagement, to name a few, we have instructors performing double duty. When my daughter attended Stewart Kramer, I remember the time she stood at the bus stop for sometimes up to an hour until I rearranged my schedule to give her to provide transportation. She graduated in 2022, and I am saddened to hear that this is still the plight of many parents. We must ring the alarm because these bus shortages often affect families with fewer resources and less flexible work schedules. When bus routes are cut, reduced, or routinely late, it is the students with the fewest alternative options who bear the greatest burden. This is not simply a transportation issue. It's an instructional time equity and long-term economic opportunity issue for the community. I've listened to all of the hard work and dedication that Tanya Kales and her entire team, Dr. Powers, have put into the Innovation Schools program, but I can't help to think that transportation issues faced by the county could possibly impact that work, and I do not like that at all. I respectfully ask the Board of Education and District Administration to provide a public report that outlines the current challenges. How many schools in Gaston County, specifically in Bessemer City, are currently experiencing bus route eliminations, reductions, or chronic delays? What's the number of students affected? What is the district's multi-year plan to stabilize and strengthen transportation, including not just recruitment, but retention of drivers? And what's a reasonable timeframe for improvement? It would be helpful for this report to be updated at regular intervals so that families and community partners can track the progress and understand where additional support is needed. By prioritizing transportation as a key education issue, Gaston County can demonstrate its commitment to giving every student a fair chance to succeed. Thank you all for your service and for your attention to the school bus shortage.
Thank you. Next is Teri Elabray.
Good evening. Good evening to Dr., excuse me, Chairman Chris, Vice Chair Cherry, Dr. Hushard, and the members of the Gaston County Board of Education. I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As you know, the world of education is changing, and we all want the best possible education for our children, our students. College is a big decision and can be intimidating, and they need all of the help that they can get from us. Hence my reason for being before you today. I have given you or sent by you a flyer for College Day. Now, Gastonia Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is proud to host College Day, which is Saturday, December sixth, 2025, which is a college fair for middle school and high school students at Irwin Center at eleven AM. And that this College Day, we want them to get excited about going to college. We know it's a big deal. We know it's a lot of money, but we want them to see the many colleges there that are represented that they can actually talk to. They can talk to them about FAFSA, ACT scores, SAT scores. But most of all, they can talk to them and ask questions one-on-one about the college and about scholarships. This event connects the Gaston County communities and inspires students and parents alike to what to expect to apply to college, what college can do for them, and get some exposure and maybe some one-on-one time with that particular college they may be interested in. Sometimes this is the only time that they can get to see colleges without somebody taking them to each college separately. So we can do this as a conglomeration, and they can get more information. So I challenge each of you to send this flyer to middle school, high school principals, teachers, counselors, and the community to come to this College Day. It's no charge to them, but it's information that they can use, and I would love for you guys to promote this all over Gaston County and in your communities. As your vision says, the vision of Gaston County School is to inspire success and a lifetime of learning, and that's what we want to do for the children of Gaston County. My son was a product of Gaston County Schools. I was a very hands-on mom. I'm sure the principals would tell you that at Forest View and all the other schools, but we need our children. We need them to learn, as we just heard. So I encourage you and challenge you to send that out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So our final speaker is Ann Helms.
Good evening. I'm Ann Helms from Belmont. In September, I spoke to you all about the urgency of improving academic performance for all students in Gaston County. I've since learned about the plans that Dr. Hushard, Tanya Kales, and their crew are putting in place to support our lowest-performing schools and to strengthen instruction at all schools. I'm impressed. They seem to be making serious plans, not excuses, and by extension, so are you, the board. So thank you for that. A recent Gaston Gazette article said there were about six hundred homeless students in Gaston County. That shocked and mobilized some people, but as you all know, the real number is even higher. Gaston County Schools had more than nine hundred homeless students last year and is on track to top that number this school year. Think about that. More than nine hundred children and teens who are living in cars, motels, or the homes of friends and relatives, never sure where they'll be the next night or the next week. The numbers are rising sharply, not just here, but across the region. This is a crisis that the School Board did not create. In fact, Gaston County Schools is doing many things to support these students, working with community partners to provide food, clothing, hygiene items, and bedding. What the School Board needs to do is keep up the pressure. Don't let this fade with the turn of the news cycle. Keep reminding our community that these are kids who are in a bad situation through no fault of their own and who cannot fully focus on schoolwork until we help their families find stability. Finally, there's the driver shortage that Brenda Eskridge spoke about. Just as it's hard to learn if you're anxious about where you'll sleep, it's hard to learn when you can't get to school on time. This seems to be a staffing problem, not a policy failure, but I hope you'll feel urgency to find solutions, even if it means making an emergency request to the county for money for raises or recruitment bonuses to help Gaston County compete for drivers. This cannot wait for the next budget cycle. Last spring, I urged county commissioners to find money to cover the School Board's request for bigger teacher salary supplements to help our district compete for teachers. Honestly, by the time they held a public hearing, it was too late. But now is the time when you and the county are starting to plan for the coming year's budget. Your job is to make the case for what our children, our educators, and our community need, what we need to support our struggling students, and what we need to boost success across the board. The commissioner's job is to decide what they'll spend, given competing demands and the desire for low taxes. And our job is to let both boards know what we want. There's a whole lot that divides us now, but when it comes to insisting on support for public education and homeless children, I think that's something that can unite us. Thank you.
Thank you. We do appreciate all our speakers tonight, and thank you for taking time to address the board. Next on our agenda is approval and correction of minutes. I need a motion to approve our minutes from our October twentieth, 2025 meeting. Mr. Kenlaw.
Second.
Second, Ms. Cherry. Any discussion on those meetings, or, excuse me, minutes? None of all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next is our Operations Committee report. Our Operations Committee is chaired by Mr. Moore, who is absent tonight. Ms. Cherry will give that report.
The Operations Committee met here in the Central Office Boardroom on Monday, November the third at eight thirty AM. The committee consisted of Chairman Brent Moore, myself, Lee Dedman, and Todd Kenlaw. Our agenda included the following. Finance Officer Gary Hoskins, Assistant Financial Officer James Bedford, and District Budget Analysis Analyst Susan Brooks presented an update and overview of the district's funding structure, of the overall budget, reviewing all funding sources, state, local, federal, and special budgets. An annual bonus was recommended and approved by the committee to eligible classified hourly employees to be paid on November twenty-first of 2025. Mr. Hoskins also presented the following state health plan updates. Aetna remains the state health insurance planner. Premiums are now based on employee salaries with supplements included. The effective date will be January one of 2026, with deductions starting December of 2025. Best Super HR Director reported a substitute fill rate of eighty-eight percent, and we still have forty-three teacher vacancies district-wide. HR also participated in Employee Veteran Job Fair on November the fifth. Classroom Central and the Carolina Panthers donated more than seven thousand backpacks with school supplies for our Gaston County students, and we're grateful for them. Operations Director Bessie Harvey noted that in accordance with federal guidelines in Food and Nutrition Service Instruction seven eight two dash five, revision one, it is required that an adjustment be made to all adult meal plans, or prices, excuse me. This proposed increase aligns with the requirement that adult meal prices reflect the full cost of meals, including the value of the USDA foods and other operational expenses. Under this proposal, food items will be listed and charged à la carte, consistent with federal pricing standards. The proposed new pricing structure will become effective January fifth of 2026. This item will be on the consent agenda tonight. The committee reviewed and amended the following contracts: Gardner Park Elementary School LED lighting conversion and Fit Fields selected, and Fit Fields was selected as the design firm for the Forest View Stadium renovations. The Operations Committee recommended these for approval, and these will also appear on the consent agenda tonight. The newly-formed Policy Committee gave an update on their very productive first meeting, during which eleven of the thirteen proposed policy revisions were approved. They will meet again on Tuesday, November the twenty-fifth. The next Operations Committee meeting will be scheduled for December first at eight thirty here in the boardroom, and that's my report. Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Our next report is our Curriculum and Instruction Report. The chairman of that committee is Mr. Ramsey, and I believe Ms. Smith's going to read the report tonight.
Yes, Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
The Curriculum Committee met at the Central Office Boardroom on Monday, November third, 2025, at eight thirty AM. The committee consists of Chairman Jeff Ramsey, Robbie Lovelace, myself, Jana Smith, and A.M. Stevens III. Our agenda included the following. Mr. Hoskins presented the following state health plan updates, including premiums are now based on the employee's salary with supplements included. Aetna remains the health insurance provider. The effective date will be January one, 2026. The Human Resources Report shows a substitute fill rate of eighty-eight percent and forty-three teacher vacancies district-wide. HR also participated in the Employee Veteran Job Fair on November fifth, and Classroom Central, I'm sorry, and Classroom Central and the Carolina Panthers donated more than seven thousand backpacks with school supplies for Gaston County students. In Teaching and Learning, Ms. Kales and the Academic Service Team shared a deep dive into Teaching and Learning in Action, aligned with the goals to raise grade-level proficiency and growth across the schools. Teachers are using data-driven planning days to focus on analyzing interim assessments and reteaching through modeling and guided discourse. The district-wide data analysis protocol and School Net reports continue to guide instructional planning. Student Support Services presented updates on efforts to raise attendance to ninety-five percent and strengthen mental health reports. The Mental Health Plan was approved to be placed on the November seventeenth consent agenda. Dr. Powers also announced a district-wide attendance video competition, and shared the graduation audits are underway with high school counselors. Parents and community engagement continues through advisory councils, mentoring programs, and faith-based partnerships. A new online registration platform is being developed to improve student enrollment, and updates were shared on the Student-Athlete Advisory Council and fall sports. Ms. Dot Cherry reported that the Policy Committee approved eleven of thirteen proposed revisions, which are on the consent agenda for approval. The committee will meet again on November twenty-fifth. Several schools were identified for added to no-nonsense nurturing, serving over thirty-five hundred students. This item is on the consent agenda. Ms. Kales also shared the timeline for the Lights Camera Lead Program, which develops future principles through a series of leadership sessions and a selection process extending into the spring. The Career and Technical Education Update highlighted activities for Military Family Appreciation Month, Chervil High School's Career Rotation Day, and expanded middle school career exploration through the interactive learning modules. The next meeting is scheduled for December first, 2025, at eleven thirty AM in the boardroom.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our final report is from our Policy Committee. Ms. Cherry.
Ms. Chair, I'm A.M. Stevens. I'll read that report.
The Policy Committee met at the Central Office Boardroom on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, 2025, at six AM in the morning, and they tried to blame that early start time on me. The committee consists of Chair Dot Cherry, Jana Smith, and myself, A.M. Stevens III. Our agenda included the following. The committee members convened to review a total of thirteen policies. After thorough discussion and consideration, the Policy Committee reached consensus on eleven of those policies, which were presented at the November third committee meetings for consideration and are recommended for full board approval on the consent agenda. The remaining two policies, one of them being the cell phone policy, will require additional review and discussion. These items will be addressed in depth at our next committee meeting to ensure all questions and considerations are fully resolved prior to making recommendation to the board. The next Policy Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, at six PM in the Central Office Boardroom.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Thank you to all committees for all the hard work you do on behalf of the Board, the students, and our staff. Next on our agenda is our budget resolution. Mr. Hoskins.
Good afternoon, Chairman Crisp, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the Board, Superintendent Hushard. I'm here to present the 2025-2026 Budget Resolution for Approval. There is a link to this budget resolution on the Board Agenda, and this is also what we discussed in our Operations Committee as well. So our Board Resolution will look like the Board Resolution for every other school district in the state, because the way it is presented is prescribed by state law and by the State Board of Education. So you will see the six primary funding sources that we have: state, local, federal, capital outlay, child nutrition, and other special revenues, as well as three other narrative sections. Each of these funding sections will have two sections each. First will be the expenses, and then second will be the revenues for each of those six items. Each of those items will also balance. The revenues and the expenses will balance in each of those. So we try to make sure that our budget resolution is consistent with our vision, our mission, and our priorities. And actually, as we work on our strategic plan for next year, we're actually tying back individual budget lines to the priorities in our strategic plan. So let's look at our total revenue sources for our school district. It's four hundred and sixty-one point seven million dollars, and you can see about forty-eight percent of that comes from the state. So that is our largest contributor to our revenue. It's from the state budget. The other item I'd like to point out is capital outlay. You see, that's a large number, a hundred and twenty million dollars. That number fluctuates from year to year, and the reason it's so high this year is that the county issued a hundred and ten million dollars of that two hundred and fifty million dollar bond offering last year. So that's why you see that number jump up. That number will start to decrease as we use those bond dollars, and then the next time they issue another bond offering, it'll go up. So it's really a non-operating item on our budget, as well as child nutrition, which is an enterprise fund. It's got its own revenues coming in. It's got its own revenues coming in and it has its own expenses. So we'll talk primarily about the operating sources of revenue, which is state, federal, local, and special revenue. And as I mentioned, the expenses have to balance the revenues. So as you can see here, the expenses are $461.7 million as well. This is broken out by purpose code, which again is set forth by the state. The primary purpose code you can see is instructional services, which is right at 55%. System support, charter school payments, indirect cost, and then again, child nutrition and capital. So as I mentioned, we'll go through the top four primary operating items of revenue. The first one is the state. So as you know, we still have no comprehensive biennial state budget. Normally, we would be presenting this budget resolution after we pass the state budget. This is actually probably the first time since I've been here that we've done it without the state budget. However, we've waited long enough. We do have recurring funding from DPI from the base funding that's in the state budget and there are also some provisions that they have set forth in the mini budgets and that's what we're using and that's what other school districts are using as well in lieu of a comprehensive biennial budget. So one of the things, this is a slide from DPI and the state budget is about $30 billion and healthcare, or I'm sorry, education spending is right around 40% of the state budget. And you can see it's actually trended down a little bit over the last three or four years. One of the things that the state, the General Assembly is sort of fighting about is some cuts in the state tax rate. So obviously if you have a million dollars of cuts, then you're going to have a 40% or $400,000 reduction in funding for education if this holds true. So just wanted to let you see how much of our state dollars does go to education. So let's talk about state allotments. That's how we're funded is by state allotments and most state allotments are driven by student enrollment or what they call ADM, which is an acronym for Average Daily Membership. That's student enrollment. And keep in mind that actually our student enrollment this year went up 688 students. We're right at 30,616 students this year compared to 29,928 last year. However, all students are not allotted equally. If you are a high school student, the state will allot one teacher for every 29 students in a high school. However, if you're a kindergarten student, they allot you one teacher for every 18 kindergarten teachers or kindergarten students. So there is some discrepancy there. They also cap our EC funding at 13%. We have identified just over, I think, 15% of our students as EC and needing EC services. So we've got about 2% of our EC population, which does not get any incremental funding from the state. So there are three primary types of state allotments. The first one is a positional allotment and this is one of the bigger ones and this is unique in that it allotts a specific, a person for a specific purpose. The main one is a classroom teacher. So we get a certain allotment, a certain number of classroom teachers regardless of the salary that they earn. So we get about 1,300 allotments for teachers and we will put our highest paid teachers into those allotments. The other teachers that exceed 1,300 or 1,400, whatever we may receive, we have to use those out of dollar allotments and those are a lot more common and easier to understand. So for example, all of our teacher assistants, we just get a bucket of money for our teacher assistants and whether we hire 100 teacher assistants or 90 teacher assistants, once that money is gone, then it's going to have to come from another funding source. And the third method of allotment is a categorical allotment and that's when, that's what they use in order to address specific student characteristics. So think of our EC funding. As I mentioned, we get 13%. Our at-risk student services, AIG, and also our low wealth and we'll talk a little bit more about low wealth in a minute. So some of the main things that we use these state dollars for are on this list here. Classroom teachers is going to be by far the biggest user of state funding, but we also have various academic programs. All of our principals, probably I think 60% of our assistant principals. I already mentioned children with disabilities, transportation, maintenance, utilities, insurance. Those are, I'm sorry, transportation and clerical custodial support and TAs, those all come from state. And easily classroom teachers make up $104 million, which is about 47% of all of our state funding. And again, state funding was about what, 48% of total funding? Students with disabilities, right at 22 million and then CTE, clerical custodial, and TAs are all in the $10 million range. So looking at last year compared to this year, so I mentioned earlier that our ADM is up 688 students so that and also that most of our allotments were based on ADM. So a lot of those numbers did increase. However, we did have a $7.2 million reduction in our low wealth county supplemental funding and the purpose of that is for the state to supplement those counties that cannot adequately fund education. So what they look at, or it's a complicated formula, but one of the driving factors is property taxes. And so a couple of years ago, our county commissioners, we did a revaluation as every county does every five to seven years. And as a result of that revaluation, we got a little bit closer to the average for the state. If we're above the state average when it comes to valuations and ability to pay, then we fall out of low wealth. We're still barely in it. So as other counties reevaluate next year, we'll start to continue to drop back down on the average. So we would expect that number to go back up, but right now for this year, unless we get some assistance from the state and we have been seeking that, we are having a $7.2 million reduction in low wealth and we've got a $924,000 reduction in state funding with 688 additional children. So local budget, the local budget was approved back in May, so I'm just going to hit this fairly quickly. Nothing's changed. Our three primary areas of local funding are number one, first and foremost, the county commissioners. They give us this year $54 million of our county appropriation plus about $4 million of capital outlay. They also do some other things that are on their books, but not on our books, but on our behalf, such as bond debt payments, school resource officers, et cetera. And we also get fines and forfeitures and interest on deposits and that's budgeted at about $800,000. So as I mentioned, last year we got $53.5 million of county appropriation. However, we only got $47 million of that because we have to remit a prorata share of all of our county funding to the charter schools. And right now, there are about 12% of total students in Gaston County go to charter schools. So we are remitting of that $54 million, about six, over $6 million of that goes straight out the door to those charter schools. So like I said, we only get to realize, in the case of last year, $47 million and it'd be about $47.5 million maybe this year. So what do we use our local budget for? Salary supplements is one of the big things. We have to pay teachers based on the state salary schedule that they have. And I think one of the speakers here mentioned earlier, you know, and we have been, you know, asking for this for year after year, higher salary supplements for our teachers, that's where this money comes from, as well as some supplements to principals, APs. All of our maintenance personnel is paid out of our local money. Student technology, the Chromebooks that we buy. I mentioned utilities and insurance in the state, but it's really, this is local money as well as school resource officers, all of our athletics, arts, and I already mentioned charter school payments. So when you look at the dollars, almost $10 million in maintenance and non-instructural personnel, clerical. Almost $9.5 million in salary supplements. Utilities and facility contracts, $8.5 million and then 8.2 district support and then as I mentioned, $6.8 million right out the door to charter schools. So looking at last year to this year, this year we're $500,000 more than we were last year on the operating side and that's earmarked for our teacher supplements. On the capital side, we're getting about $4 million allotted for that, which is a decrease of $327,000 from last year. So federal budget, so you may see from time to time where we have rolled over funds from last year, last fiscal year to this fiscal year. The reason that that happens is that the federal government operates on a different fiscal year than we do. They operate on a fiscal year that's October 1st to September 30th. So we always have to roll over about three months' worth of those federal funds at the beginning of the year to pay salaries and pay other federal expenses. So you'll see that. And federal funds are primarily to supplement programs that we're doing, not to supplant. We've got about 27, we have 27 Title I schools and so that's where a lot of the federal money goes to that. So DPI is very integral in our federal distribution of funds. We order our cash through DPI. We have our budget approved by DPI. We are audited by DPI. So I know there's discussion and some concern about, well, the states are going to get block grants from the federal government possibly. Well, DPI is really already administering that and so that doesn't concern me as much as maybe some other people. So what does concern me though, here's the top five budgeted federal expenses and these are all grants. You have to apply for this money. Number one, Title I, as I mentioned, we have 27 Title I schools. Number two, Title IVB, that's children with disabilities. Numbers three and four, which I've highlighted, that's Title II and Title IV. The federal government withheld these funds for the month of July. So we were expecting to get this money July 1st, we didn't get the money for a month later and the federal government is all but telling us, you better prepare to not have these funds next year. And so these are funds that we have a lot of our academic services people, a lot of our training, a lot of our teacher support people. So we're concerned about that. And then lastly, CTE. So when you look at last year's federal budget and this year's federal budget, we expect it to be about the same. Now when you look at the budget that you have in here, the beginning numbers are different because last year we approved the budget resolution earlier and we didn't have all of our federal money dropped at the time that we do now. So but at the end of the year last year, we had about $29 million in federal money and we expect that to be pretty flat this year. The concern is for next year that there will be those budget cuts, million, two and a half million in budget cuts and we've been talking about this really since July 1st, since they withheld that first payment to us and trying to work to prepare, you know, for that next year. So special revenue, special revenue is our reimbursements, indirect costs, sales tax refunds, tuition, et cetera. It's got a budget of $15.4 million and it's mainly made up of two primary vendors. Medicaid, which is $7.1 million of reimbursement for expenses related to Medicaid and then North Carolina pre-K, $5.1 million. That's about 80% of special revenue and we have a lot of small donations and small grants that are in there, but that's the two biggest items there. So with any budget, you're always forecasting, there's always things to be wary of and there's some of them are internal and some of them are external. Some of the internal things are any staffing or compensation changes that we have, changes in our programs, changes in technology, facility upgrades, as well as any health and safety initiatives. That was big a couple of years ago. And also external factors, which we really have little to no control over. Has changes in state and federal funding. We got a little taste of that July 1st with the federal funding. Changes in local demographics, we see a lot of dirt being moved in the county and how that flows through to the school system. Economic changes, you know, the local tax revenues, you know, the county has to run their own business and if tax revenues are down, then that's going to, you know, probably impact us and if tax revenues are up, hopefully it'll impact us positively. Inflation is one of the silent killers that we have and we ask for inflation every year from the county. We haven't received it, but you know, a lot of people say, well, it's only 2.5%. That's 2.5% on the 2.5% from last year, which was on the 4% from the year before and the 8% before that. It's all cumulative and we've got to have some mechanism for being able to address that with the county and with our other funding partners. And certainly student population trends as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will open it up for discussion.
Any questions for Mr. Hoskins?
Yes, sir.
It is included. They say lots on 54 million, they get 12% of that, however you slice it and dice it.
Yes, sir.
Were you talking about the additional $500,000 that, yeah, the supplement to the teachers, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Lovelace.
And we're billed from the individual charter schools and the checks are written from Gaston County schools for all of our students who would be students here, but they have chosen to go elsewhere. Could you please explain that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. So the state funding is a direct payment to the charter schools. It has nothing to do with us. We never see their state funding, we don't know how they're funded. However, our county funding, the $54 million, we have to take that and then we get a roster of their students from every school, I think there's over 40 schools that we actually pay and then we have to give a prorata portion of that $54 million to those schools. They invoice us on a monthly basis and then we do have to remit that money on a monthly basis.
The state sends that money to every LEA and then the LEAs disperse that money accordingly?
No, ma'am. They send it directly to the charter schools.
Mr. Hoskins, just to clarify, you did say 40 charter schools a set? Just for clarification, that can include online charters. So any student that we are supposed to serve, if they attend the charter school anywhere in the state of North Carolina, we send them a check?
Correct. If we believe it to be a valid student that lives in Gaston County and that would, could attend Gaston County schools, then yes, sir.
Hey Gary, on the top of your head, how many of these charter schools are outside of Gaston County?
All but four.
Thank you.
Four or three? One went out of business a couple of years ago, but I think it's down to four now. A lot of them, you know, other than, you know, some of the ones that are just right across the border, a lot of them have less than six students.
Any other discussion or any other questions for Mr. Hoskins? So a motion on the floor from Mr. Deben to approve the budget resolution, do I have a second? Mr. Ramsey, any further discussion on the budget resolution? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? It's, looks like it's going to be seven to two. Six, excuse me, I forget Mr. Moore is not here, sorry, math's not good tonight. Mr. Hoskins, I think you have a certified bonus or classified bonus presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is for approval. So this is for approval as well. As Ms. Cherry mentioned earlier, at our operations committee meeting, we did present this, and they are recommending this for approval. So every year, certainly longer than I've been here and probably longer than most of y'all have been here, this board has approved a November bonus for our classified employees, and those are our hourly employees. The bonus is 3.5%, we're proposing that it be paid on November 21st. We're ready to move as soon as this board makes a decision. You have to be, meet three criteria. Number one is you have to be employed by Gaston County schools on June 2nd, 2025, not June 1st, or June 3rd, rather. You have to work at least 50% of the time and be a permanent GCS employee. So those three criteria, you have to meet. This bonus will be subject to FICA taxes, retirement, state and federal income taxes, just like anything else. If you don't work 100% and are still at 50% or more, it'll be prorated. So if you're at 75%, you get a prorated portion of the bonus. And the budgeted cost of this is 1.4 million, which is about what it was last year as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this.
Motion for Ms. Cherry, second for Mr. Dedman. Any discussion on those classified bonuses? Hearing none, all in favor? Appears unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoskins. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Smith, Mr. Dedman, any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'm about to discuss one.
Okay.
And I would like to thank Mr. Preston Harvey, who signed out for Saturday to explain the federal laws. My concern is about the adult meal prices going up. And Ms. Harvey did explain to me that this is a necessary evil that we're having to do this, that it is based on the federal requirements, and I appreciate that. But I'm going to have to say no to this consent agenda just because that's on there, because I, I know we can't do anything about it because it's stated we find it, but that's the only reason I'm going to say no to the consent agenda. Everything else, I agree with, and I know this is not your doing, Missy, but and I appreciate so much that, the explanation that you took here Saturday to give to me, I really, really do, that maybe that's something that we can work with our lawmakers about or something.
Further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Ms. Clark, you get the count? Thank you. Next on agenda, our superintendent comments. Dr. Hushard.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's good to be with you all this evening, and I do have a few items I'm excited to share with you. First, we want to congratulate all of our high school fall athletic teams for a very successful season. As we've seen from the good news, we've had a lot of representation at the state level. And this Friday night, we have three football teams who will have advanced to round three of the state playoffs. Those three schools are Ashbrook, and they will host Greensboro Dudley. South Point will host Monroe, and Stuart W. Kramer will travel to High Brighton. So we wish Ashbrook, South Point, and Stuart Kramer good luck as they play this week in the third round and continue in their quest for a football championship. This year, the Gaston Regional Science and Engineering Fair will be held at Belmont City Works in Belmont. The competition for elementary school is scheduled for December 4th and 5th, and the competition for middle and high schools will take place on January 8th and 9th. This annual event gives our students the opportunity to showcase their projects and research, explore new ideas, and celebrate the importance of science, technology, engineering, and math. We look forward to seeing our students' excellent work on display during the upcoming Science and Engineering Fair. It is an exciting event and time. Our schools have done a great job of emphasizing the importance of good school attendance, and I want to thank everyone for making attendance a priority. We are working hard to improve the academic achievement in Gaston County, and we know that in order for high-quality teaching and learning to take place, teachers need students in seats, and students need teachers teaching. Attendance matters, and I want to thank everyone who is helping to make a difference. The holiday season is here, which means it's time for our annual Christmas parades. If you're going to any of the parades, be sure to look out for our marching bands, our cheerleaders, our students, and other school groups as we celebrate the holiday season in Gaston County. The parade season kicks off this Saturday, November 23rd, I'm sorry, Sunday, November 23rd, with the Bessemer City Parade, and there's a full schedule of parades taking place over the next several weeks. So I'm excited for our school groups who attend and partake in those parades. It is a season for caring and giving, as we know, and I want to thank our students and employees for supporting canned food drives and other initiatives during this holiday season. I know that a number of our schools have sponsored collection drives for the Food Pantry Program at Webb Street School. Very proud of that program, too, by the way. This program is also important as the students at Webb Street work with our social workers to distribute the canned goods to families in need across Gaston County. So thank you to everyone who has supported the various drives and the collections to support people in need this holiday. Last Tuesday, we observed Veterans Day, and I want to thank our schools, seriously thank our schools for all they did to celebrate our veterans and bring attention to the service they've given our country. We greatly appreciate our veterans and their dedication, their commitment, and sacrifice they have made for our great nation. So veterans, thank you for your service. And finally, as a reminder, Thanksgiving is next week, which means Wednesday is a student holiday. Thursday and Friday will be annual leave days for teachers. Thursday and Friday are holidays for all employees, and our schools and central offices will be closed. So we hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, take time with family and friends as we pause to show our gratitude for all that we have in our lives. Happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Chairman, that completes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hushard. As we close tonight, I would like to thank everyone for their support of this board and for Gaston County schools. We do certainly appreciate that. Our next regular board meeting is December 15th, 2025, and having no other business to transact tonight, we'll look for a motion to close. Ms. Cherry, Ms. Smith on the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.